Wish to call to order this work session of Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's July 19th, 2023, and again Commissioner Jones and I are present in the Nat U Hill Room, and Commissioner Thomas is joining us virtually. We have multiple items on our agenda today, and the first one is with County Attorney Dave Schilling. This is an agreement concerning G E F T's as-applied claim.
Thank you very much, Dave Schilling from the Legal Department. This is a sort of a convoluted situation and relates to the federal lawsuit that was filed against the county's sign ordinance. And that case was heard in the Southern District of Indiana, and one of the claims was whether the variance criteria that the county uses violated the First Amendment when applied to signs. And so the district court judge concluded that the variance criteria did violate the Constitution. That issue was taken to the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals in Chicago, and they reversed on that issue and sent it back to the district court for proceedings consistent with the Seventh Circuit's order. In the meantime, the seven, or the district court had scheduled a damages hearing, a damages jury trial, in fact, for mid-September. And so when the Seventh Circuit overturned the Southern District's decision, both G F attorney and the county's attorney filed a motion in the Southern District to stay the jury trial on the issue of damages because G F intended to seek a writ of cert to this United States Supreme Court on this issue. Well, the district court granted that motion, and then a few days later, for some reason, it vacated that and said the jury trial is back on. So in the meantime, G F had petitioned the Supreme Court for the writ of certiorari, and that issue, the writ petition, will not be heard by the Supreme Court until about 10 days after the scheduled jury trial. So it's very likely that this jury trial will never take place and will not be needed, and it's a very expensive thing to prepare for. So both G F's attorney and the county's attorney have come up with an agreement whereby they dismissed the case, reserving for G F the right to refile on the issue of damages if the Supreme Court accepts cert and overturns the Seventh Circuit. So this is just a sort of a backdoor way to get out of a trial that's going to cost both sides a lot of money and might not be needed. And so we're here presenting this agreement to you today, asking for you to authorize Karen Pollak, the county's attorney in this case, to sign that agreement on behalf of the county. And that's it.
So we need a motion then regarding the agreement concerning G F's as-applied claim and authorizing Karen Pollak, was it?
Yes.
I move approval of the agreement concerning G F's as-applied claim and allowing Karen Pollak to sign on behalf of the county.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, Commissioner Thomas or Commissioner Jones?
Nope.
You were right, Mr. Schilling. It was very convoluted. Is there any public comment at all on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Next item, we have Beth Hamlin from the Prosecutor's Office.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. This is a request for the Commissioner's signature on an amendment to the original memorandum of understanding regarding our high-tech crime unit. The Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council has offered us an additional $30,000 in funding for this year for our high-tech crime unit. It's to be used for the establishment, administration, and maintenance of the high-tech crime unit and can go toward payroll or other categories of service.
So we need a motion for this as well, is that correct, Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
I move approval of the addendum to the H T C U memorandum of agreement.
Second.
Any comments or questions, my colleagues? It's always nice to have more money, so appreciate the Prosecutor's Office for making this happen, making it possible. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hamlin. Next, we have Ms., I don't know whether it's Mr. Cockrell or Ms. Purdy here to talk about supplemental agreement with D L Z, the discussion of the full project. Mr. Cockrell?
That would be, that would be me. And really, I want to talk about two different things. The first is when we executed an agreement earlier this year for them to do kind of a 10,000-foot view over up to four sites, we had an executive session where the county council and the sheriff were in attendance, and there was a, well, no vote was taken, there was somewhat of a consensus on looking at four different sites. As they, so I worked with D L Z to have them start looking at those four different sites, and it turns out that they're, and that our original agreement had them notify me when they got to a certain percentage of the not to exceed. They got to that certain percentage prior to the June 26th executive session. What this, the first agreement is to kind of fulfill the cost of the work up through that work session, and it went to $20,000. And so that's, that's kind of item number one. Given that it wasn't in the packet, I think it's best to just put that on the agenda for next week, and we can have it at that, at that time. The second is I have been working on, with D L Z on an agreement to kind of do the entire, from start to finish, designing of the jail. It includes six different, you know, steps. Step one would be the pre-design, which would include master, and I guess I should say now, we haven't determined where the site is going to be. I think that is probably going to be the question. But there are six different phases. One is pre-design, which would include master planning, whatever site we have, as well as them going to the various departments and look at building programming. The second would be schematic design. The third would be design development, then construction documents, procurement phase, construction service, phase services. So each, it will have like six different steps. You don't move to the, they would not move to the next step until it has been approved by the Board of Commissioners that you are okay with the work so far. So I kind of want to make sure you guys weren't expecting a different agreement for each step because that was one of the things we had talked about. And we had talked about, or there are several different ways you could do the construction management of this. One would be the county staff oversees it, which is not recommended by anybody anywhere. One would have a construction manager who is doing work on the, on the site, manage the project. One would be a construction manager who is not going to be on-site or not be doing work on-site. And the third would is what they called a build-operate-transfer agreement, where you would get a fixed price for the, for the, whatever you, was designed, and then they would pay either, they would either make profit if the actual construction costs were less, or they would be required to cover any expense if it was more. The document we are looking at is assuming that we're going to use the construction manager who is not doing work on the site, but I don't think that's necessarily been a conclusion reached by anyone. And so I just kind of wanted to throw out some of these touchpoint where we're at and kind of some of these decisions now to see if you guys had a preference on, one, whether it's, you guys are comfortable with having one large document that covers every step so long as you're not moving to the next step. And then the second is, is that construction manager not doing work on the site a direction you guys are comfortable with, or do we need to have kind of a work session discussion about, you know, what is the, what mechanism you guys would be most comfortable with? I want to keep this moving forward so that we are ready to go once that decision's made. And so these are kind of two of the big-picture questions we have at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
So it seems like we need the council's guidance on this, and it seems like they have a committee that should be discussing this and giving us their input. The two separate questions both need to be addressed at the same time, I assume, and is that correct?
I think they're both, they both need to be addressed before we approve the contract, right? Those are the kind of two of the major issues. When is the next, you know, when the next meeting?
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first?
Commissioner Jones?
I don't have any questions at this time.
I believe we have a representative from D L Z here. Is there anything you'd like to share with us at this time?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Scott Carnegie, D L Z, Monroe County resident. Just, I guess, to elaborate on what Jeff had just explained, the first issue is the supplement for the initial site evaluation. And Jeff is exactly right that our original agreement said that once we got billed to a certain percentage, if that was going to be insufficient, we'd let you all know. So that's what we did. The idea was that that then would get us to the June 26th meeting that we all had when we presented the findings of the four sites. And from that point forward, then, in the second agreement that Jeff just spoke about, that that would take off and cover any costs that we had from that point forward. And Jeff is exactly right. This is the way that it's typically done on a project, where there's one contract, but there's multiple phases broken down within that. And each of those phases requires owner review and approval before we are authorized to proceed to the next phase. So happy to answer any questions.
With this kind of thing, I assume that we also need to make a decision on the site before we can go beyond much of what we've done. Is that correct or not correct?
So our, our second agreement that Jeff spoke about, it includes pre-designed services, which is the master planning and programming. So yes, before we start the master planning process, we need to know what site we're actually master planning. But what I would suggest is that we start what we call programming, and that's what Jeff explained, where we meet with various departments. And that's where we, we talk about and have the open discussions of what should, what programmatic spaces does this facility need to incorporate and address? Because we need to have that information so that we can then master plan a site. That make sense? So that, really, the programming needs to come ahead of master planning. So with your all approval of the agreement, then I would suggest that that's, would be the immediate next step, would be the building programming.
So I think that we do need to hear from our county council colleagues because we need to know how much money is available and I guess how they're going to raise that money for a new jail. We're pretty much all in agreement, we are in agreement, that we need to move on stuff. And so I would urge my county colleague, county council colleagues to make those hard decisions. We've got to have that so that we know what, what we're looking at.
And I presume perhaps you all haven't seen it yet. I know Jeff has, but in our agreement, because we have the same questions, you know, really what is the budget? So we have various breakdowns, you know, a pretty wide range of what the fee would be for the various approved construction cost.
So we'll need to work with Mr. Cockrell on that as well.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think, I've gotten to the point where I'm ready to talk about the financial side of it. I want to get these kind of bigger, quite big-picture questions answered, and then we can move into that.
Understood, understood. This is a very complex project. But I would like to point out for the public that Scott is a resident of Monroe County. He has a vested interest in making sure this is done right also. And I really am happy that you're here with us and always here with us.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this topic? So we'll see something back, is it next week, Mr. Cockrell, or will it be in three weeks? We're not going to meet in two weeks.
I guess my feeling is that it sounds like I should get on the agenda with the, with the council group and talk to them and see what their thoughts are.
Their, the July 31st meeting that they have, is that it?
I'm going to try to get on their July 25th meeting, but if, if that's their work session with the full council, if not, I would do the 31st. So I would think, yes.
Okay.
Probably not next week.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to that when it's possible. Commissioner Thomas?
And I assume, Mr. Cockrell, you're going to bring us the agreement for the extension of the current services, though, next week, right?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Then we have on, as the fourth item here, I'm sorry, this is all happening pretty quickly today. We have John Bates, Business Manager for Local 136 here to talk with us about licensing standards, and I don't know if Seth Karnes or Corey Ray are going to join him, but please come up. We would like to hear about these licensing standards that you're suggesting that we act upon here in Monroe County. And thank you for coming up here. I understand that you're from Vanderburg County, is that?
Yes, thank you very much. My name is John Bates. I'm the Business Manager, Plumbers and Steamfitters Local 136. We cover 16 counties in southwestern Indiana, represent over 1,600 members, 300 of them live in Monroe County. So I just wanted our support for the licensing that we do in Vanderburg County for Monroe County. A lot of benefits to it. I mean, number one is, you know, for the public, and that's the number one thing. When we started this in the early 90s, I was born in 1981, so this was, well, you know, I was, I was a child when they got this going in Vanderburg County. Bipartisan support through the 30 years that we've had it, we've went through Republican Commissioners, Councilors, because we also have it in the city of Evansville. So the city of Evansville and the county of Vanderburg both have it. So Republican, Democrat mayor, city councilman, all the way through, and all we've done is strengthen the laws as we went through. Number one's to protect people of Vanderburg County, the city of Evansville. So you know when you have someone coming in to do work that they are competent in what they're doing. It's not a fly-by-night operation that leaves and leaves the, you know, the homeowner with a roof. I mean, this is not just what I represent with plumbing, pipe fitting, HVAC, refrigeration. It goes to roofs, swimming pools, insulation, drywall, every work that you do in Vanderburg County, you have to be licensed to do. And so it's very important, it's also important to keep the work local. So a lot of your contractors, and this is the one thing, when we go to these meetings in Vanderburg County, there'll be non-union contractors and union contractors standing up there together saying how important this licensing is. Two universities, Deaconess Hospital, St. Vincent's, Berry Plastics, all the owners that are there in Vanderburg County support this licensing as well. I mean, it's one of those that, I'm sure it was hard for the people to get it going in the early 90s when they did adopt these laws and these, and rules, but it's something that's really helped out Evansville, and actually it's the surrounding counties. Because the surrounding counties that haven't adopted licensing laws, like Warwick County, Posey County, well, they can see who the contractors are that have it in Vanderburg County, and that's who they use. So that's, that's a lot of questions I get is, well, why don't the counties right around Vanderburg have it? That's one of the reasons. Henderson across the river has just adopted these laws in Kentucky, these licensing laws. It's a, I always use the example, as far as plumbing, which is a state license, in the last couple of years, our state inspectors have been, there is no more state plumbing inspectors, it's up to the counties to enforce it. So a lot of that goes back to the building commissioners, but there's not an electrical state license. There's not a state roofing, you know, to do that stuff, there's not. So it's up to the counties to do that, and a lot of it falls on the building commissioners and, and the structures that you got set up there, because the licensing really don't mean anything if there's not enforcement. So you have to have the enforcement, and that's where our building commissioner and his people, they go out, if you have a job that contractor comes in, is doing work, it's not licensed, he's fine. I mean, it's not a, it's a stop work, it's a fine, and until they go get the licensing and can pass the test to do it, they're not able to do that work there. So it's, it's something good all the way around. It's worked really well in Vanderburg County. I think it would be very good up here in Monroe County. There's actually, if you go to the Vanderburg, it's, if you go to Vanderburg County licensing, I actually pulled it up here, contractors licensing, I mean, it's a four-step process that you go through. Number one, you fill out the application. Number two, there's test with it, exam, and, you know, if you pass, then you're able to go on to the next step. It's a huge safety issue. You know, when you know someone's competent to do the work, that's a huge deal, you know, coming in. So that is a, I mean, I could go through these licenses, there's tons of them. If you go to that website, you can click on it, I mean, anything that you pick up a tool to do work for in Vanderburg County, it is under that licensing. And I have a, and I actually talked to our old building commissioner, he's on the city council now, Ron Bean. I was talking with him a little bit this week, and he said, you know, because he was part of who created it back in the 90s, that he would love to sit down and talk with anybody up here to say how they did it. Contractors, there was some grandfathered in, people that have been doing work in this community for a long time that you guys know is good, there's grandfather ways to bring them in, they don't have to, you know, go through that right off the bat, because there's a lot of contractors that are here in town, both union and non-union, too. I mean, that's the thing, that's done work. Obviously, we like it because we know the training that we put into it, the amount of money, the five-year apprenticeship program, and what we take in educating our members before they ever get out there and do the work. You know, that's why we really like it. But, you know, there's, non-union, they do the same thing, too, you know, they, you know, there is. So it's good all the way around, keeps the work local, protects the people of Monroe County.
So are, are you willing to answer a few questions?
Yeah, the best I can, too. Again, you know, I saw, I deal with the plumbing HVAC side, but yes, anything that I can.
Well, before we start with questions, I will note for the record that, that your training center for the southern part of Indiana is here in Monroe County.
Yes, we have a facility right there on Bloomfield Road, and we're actually, we're looking for a piece of property or an existing building here in, here in the county that we can expand, because if you guys know where we're at, we're a little bit landlocked, and we are growing leaps and bounds up here with our membership. And, you know, you can only train as many people as your facility can hold, so we are trying to, we're actually looking to expand that as well. Right now, we have a local realtor, Seth might know who that is. He's from, Seth's here on a day-to-day basis, he runs that office for me up here, so, but yeah, so we're looking for that, but it is right here in, here in town.
So turn to my colleagues, either Commissioner Thomas or Commissioner Jones, do you have questions or comments?
I have a question. If the state is no longer licensing, who is doing the licensing?
So there's never been license for some of those. Plumbing, we've always had the plumbing license, and you still have to have a plumbing license to work on plumbing in the state of Indiana. It goes back to the enforcement part of it. So they've cut that, where it used to have state, Illinois and Kentucky are leaps and bounds ahead of us on that. I mean, they have, they have inspectors that are going to job sites. If you're doing, we actually had a, one of our contractors went over to Illinois, they didn't have anybody with an Illinois plumbing license, they was in the middle of a hot tap at, oh, the Adaraxia plant, I don't know if you guys know what that is, but it's the Adaraxia plant, it's, so they was in the middle of a hot tap. Everything was shut down doing a hot tap, they didn't have a plumbing license, they had to get someone there with a plumbing license to work on that. And so Indiana used to be that way, where they went around and did that, but now they've put it up to the counties. So it just depends on building commissioners and people that are going out there and doing that. There is still a state license for plumbing, I'm sure some of these other trades do, I'm sure with the ironworkers, I know just had some legislation statewide for structural welding. You have to be certified to weld on bridges and stuff, which seems like a no-brainer. But, I mean, some of these aren't, you know, and you got to meet these certain standards, and that was just passed statewide.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, I'm wondering if you could send to us the contact information for the council member you talked about who worked on the original legislation, and then if you, if you have a copy of the legislation from Vanderburg County, that might be helpful for us as a starting point as well, just, and I think it would be great for our building commissioner, Mr. Lu Ru, to have an opportunity to chime in, ask questions, and maybe talk to the council member you mentioned. Thank you.
Yep, definitely. I can, I can get that to you someone afterwards, I can email you the link as far as, and it's a lot, you know, it's a lot to look through, and it is, it's a, it's something that don't just happen overnight, but it is something, you know, to start working that way towards would be good, and, you know, it's, Ron Bean is his name, and I will get you his information.
So I actually got on to the website.
Okay.
It is extensive, but my biggest question was, who creates the tests that people have to pass? Because I don't know that we're in a position to do that.
Yeah, and so, and I'm, I'm not 100% sure on this, this is one of those that I'm not 100%, but I would say the building commission itself, its own office, I think that they're the ones that come up with the test. They probably bring in, you know, someone that's, when they, these tests are probably old, you know, if I had to guess, that they've been around for a while. As stuff changes and as code changes, you know, it's updated, but they probably bring someone in that administers that test, I think. That would, that would be a good question for Ron, when you talk to him.
Okay.
He's a great guy, he's, he'll, he'll give you guys anything that you need.
All right. I know that we have, we have an extremely dedicated staff here with us, too, so I don't know if Mr. Cockrell or Ms. Purdy have any questions.
Well, the only question I have is, have you been in contact with our building commissioner?
I have not been in contact with him yet, no.
Okay, but I think that'd be a great place to start.
I think, yeah, that is a good idea, talking with him. And I, you know, all this kind of, luckily Corey Ray has been helping me out a lot on this, up in this area, and, you know, introducing me to some people and getting, getting just the dialogue going, which is huge. And for me, a lot of the people that, they stop at Lawrence County, so the, the other building trades locals I work with down there, the ironworkers, the electricians, so a lot of that comes from Indy up here, they, they cover this Bloomingdale area, so I'm one of the few from Evansville that actually does. And we'd like to get the whole building trades talking to you and getting some contractors on both sides, union and non-union, you know, talking to you guys on that. But getting with the building commissioner would be a step, you know, before anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I was briefly looking at their websites, and they have study guides and all kinds of things, which is a, is a task, so I'd want to know what our building commissioners...
If we can piggyback on Vanderburg County's work.
And I know we have a licensing board, and so I want to, you know, I'm not sure we're starting necessarily from scratch, I'd like to see how that, those two are the same, and how are they different, and all those kind of things. I think theirs is much more extensive, because I know ours does electrical and maybe a few other things, but it's certainly, you know, a marble and tile mason is, I'm not sure that's part of ours licensing program.
Yeah, and then, and like you said, the piggyback, and that, that's what Henderson did, they just piggybacked off what we did and, you know, are implementing it over there.
Well, it sounds like we have a task in front of us, and so I hope that you and Mr. Karnes and Mr. Ray will work with us to move this forward. I, I do appreciate the fact that your members go through extensive training. I told Mr. Ray this, that several years ago I was up at Iron Workers Union Hall, and theirs is a five-year apprenticeship training. People are paid while they go through it, and they end up with an associate's degree at the end of it as well. People are paid while they go through it and they end up with an associate's degree at the end of it as well.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we're, I don't know how it is up here as much, but I know kind of in the southern part of the state, schools are pushing that more, you know, trade schools, which is, which is awesome, you know. So we are, when I went through, I got, I got in the trade in 2001. We had 125 apprentices between Bloomington and Evansville. We're up to 360 right now is what we carry, just apprentice-wise. And everything from your weld certs, all the welding certifications, to backflow, medical gas, any type of certification in the piping industry, the UA does offer it. And our guys go through that. And they have to have that before they can work on, you know, the new hospital that just went up here. A lot of the work that we do at IU, Catalent has been a big, you know, we've, we've got a lot of guys there now, which I think that'll continue to grow. Hopefully, work with Catalent. So, yeah, a lot of training, a lot of hours. It's a five-year program, two nights a week. Work during the day, go to school at night, so.
Can I ask another question? I, I'm curious because we, we seem to be going through shifts in our labor force. And then, you know, I think we're, we are not at the peak we were a few years ago and, and having enough people, enough bodies to staff all the jobs. How do you, how do you think this affects that? I mean, are we, are we narrowing the labor pool? Or are we just, or are we not?
I don't, I don't think you're narrowing the labor pool. You're, you're narrowing the out-of-town contractors that come in and are doing work that isn't up to par with the work that, you know, the contractor's going to get the licensing that want to do the work. And out-of-town contractors are going to come in and get that licensing that want to do work in Monroe County, Vanderburg County, and Henderson over there. There is a manpower shortage, huge, nationwide. And this rescue, you know, President Biden with this rescue act, you know, a bomb was dropped on the United States as far as the amount of work that's out there now with this infrastructure that has been talked about for years and years and years. Well, it's happening now. I mean, it's happening. Your new technology with your battery plants, your chip plants, it's just, it's unbelievable. You know, moving away from coal, you got these combined cycles, natural gas, all this work all at once. It's almost like the 1950s, it seems like, you know, to where there's just so much work. And there, there is, there is a manpower shortage. I don't think this licensing holds it back at all. But that, that on our end, that's, you know, looking for skilled people with this manpower shortage. I mean, just north in Indianapolis, I think they got $15 billion worth of construction work on the books that they, that's laid out in front of them, not coming up, not that they're wondering about that that's going to happen. And it's that way in Louisville, Nashville, all over the place. And it's going to happen, you know, there's talks just south of here at that Crane, the chip plant, that's probably going to happen. We're going to get some more here, we're going to get some more in Evansville and everywhere in between. And we got to get as many people as possible. That's why it's important on our end to, to get the young people from school that, you know, maybe college isn't for them, but they do want to, you know, work in a, in a skilled, in the skilled labor force, whether it be pipe fitters, electricians, ironworkers, anybody. But the licensing, I don't think is going to hold that back because we haven't seen that in Evansville. We've seen, and that is a, that is a question we get a lot. Well, just for a little chiller job, an all-piping chiller job at North High School in Evansville, we had 15 contractors bidding on it. You know, and that's just a small job that, you know, is not going to make that contractor a ton of money, but they're wanting to, you know, get in there on that. So, we haven't seen that in Vanderburg County for sure.
So we do have two big projects that we're looking to do here between the convention center expansion and building a new jail facility. And so I want to make sure it's done right.
Right.
Personally. And I, the other thing for me is unions provide pay equity for women. And for anybody that's a part of a union, they're, it's across the board. And so I really appreciate what you and your membership do.
And that's a big, that's a big initiative for us right now is, and with our general president, who's in Annapolis, Maryland. But we have, for years and years, we've been taken from half the workforce. You know, we do have women, but we have a push to try to bring more women into the trades. We are actively out just recruiting classes. We bring our journey women in to come in and talk to the classes and explain what the job site's like. There's a place for you there. And that, that's a big push too, with the manpower crunch like you're talking about. Because I, you know, it's been a man-dominated, a male-dominated field for, we've been around 123 years, you know. So, that, that is a big push for us. And you're right, when they come in, everybody, pay, benefits, healthcare, right off the bat. But that's what they're offered and, you know, the chance to get out there and, and learn a skilled trade that they'll have forever, no one can take away from you.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. We will work with you and with your colleagues to see what we can get moving here. We appreciate your time and the fact that you came up from Vanderburg County.
That's alright, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we're not done yet. Mr. Kreider, I believe you have something for us.
I do. Good morning, Commissioners. My intention was to get this on the next Commissioner's Agenda for next week. However, I've learned this company is going to be able to start a little sooner than I anticipated. So, this request is to approve the proposal submitted by B&amp;L Sheet Metal and Roofing in the amount of $12,500 to repair an area of the Justice Building Roof around the mechanical room vent. The scope of work includes removing existing modified asphalt roofing, insulation and flashing down to the deck in an eight-foot by 15-foot area that's completely degraded and holding water behind the large mechanical vent curb. Supply and install new tapered ISO insulation to create slope away from the mechanical vent curb. Supply and install new modified asphalt membrane layers, insulation and flashing as required to seal and tie into existing roofing materials. Holler off and dispose of old materials. Fund name and number to be determined.
So, this is a contract that you're proposing? So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract with B&amp;L Sheet Metal for repair and replacement of part of the Justice Building Roof in amount of $12,500 with fund name and fund number to be determined.
Second.
I hope Commissioner Thomas, were you able to receive the information that was, I think was emailed to you this morning?
I didn't. I just want to be clear for the public that this is replacing another contract that we had earlier, approved earlier.
No.
It's, it's different.
It's not.
It's, it's an addition. Actually, the first one we did, they're, they're able to get going on that, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. That, that clear, because I was going to say that's not the whole job. Okay, that makes a ton of sense. I appreciate that and absolutely support it and note that they are a local company. So, that's a good thing. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? See none. Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
And Mr. Cockrell, I believe you have one more item for us, yes?
I do, and this, this is, Lisa Ridge and I are going to participate in a mediation for the purchase of some, of some right-of-way tomorrow. And so we want to make sure that you guys are aware of that and that you guys are comfortable with us negotiating for the county. We will do our best and we will report to a Commissioner if we run into any questions. But we want to make sure we have the authority from, from the Board of Commissioners to, to do that.
So do you need a motion for that?
I would love a motion for that.
What's it worth? No. Sorry. I move that we authorize Mr. Jeff Cockrell and Ms. Lisa Ridge to negotiate for the county on a right-of-way and that if you run into problems, you are to contact one of the Commissioners.
Second.
Is that sufficient for what you need, first of all?
I believe it is.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas, did you have something?
Yeah.
Is there any public comment on this item? See none. Would you take the vote? Do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Does anyone have any other items for our work session? I think this is the most items I remember doing it. So, anyway, with that, we'll conclude this July 19th work session, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, and we will see you back here next week. Thank you so much, everyone, for your patience and your participation.